I call the North Plains City Council meeting to order at seven oh three. Please rise for the public allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Constitution of the which expands our nation under God, indivisible, to the great freedom and justice of the
All right, Lori, can you please be over called?
Thank you. Council President Dunbar.
President.
Councilor Page.
Here.
Councilor Hagedorn.
Here.
Councilor Piven.
Present.
And Councilor Ready.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have city manager agenda items report. Do you have anything you want to discover?
No, just the outline for folks.
Okay. So next will be the consent agenda, so I will entertain motion on the approval of minutes for November seventeenth as well as the city council agenda December first.
Under the council minutes, they have listed Council Michael Wallace's resignation letter. There was some formatting errors where the when it becomes ing t ing, it came with a capital E and kind of messed up a lot of the words. If you get that somehow fixed so it's easier to read. She has a well, she writes well, maybe it looks like she's writing like that.
Yeah.
You know.
I think it's been before reading, but I will see what I can do with it. And I did make a couple of corrections after speaking with Council Reading on clarifying who said what, that's why Council President Dunbar was going to make a request of all you.
Yes, I am. Okay, so are we, I think I'm hearing that we need to postpone the approval of the minutes? Yes. Or we can approve. Okay, so I'm still waiting on motion then.
Yeah.
I move to approve the minutes with the changes suggested earlier.
I'll second. Council Ready, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Page makes motion, Council Reading seconds, all in favor of approving the minutes and extend agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next is public comment. We have. Just wait a little more. So before we start public comment, I'll just remind everyone and I will be, I'll have a script read based on Hillsboroughs that I liked. Just to remind the public, this is your time to speak to the council. Council will not answer you. They may request clarification and they may bring up your item during council reports at the end of the meeting. So if you please come forward and when you're called and state your name and whether you are live inside the city, you're a rolling seven one three three resident or live outside the city. Seven one three three. And you will have three minutes. So first I have Liliana. Sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. I'm a little nervous. So my name is Liliana. I am North Plains community member and I am here to reside in nine seven three. I am a member residing in the Bren Hall neighborhood. I am the Director of Faces of Oregon, a nonprofit valuable daycare preschool here in North Plains. I am here to respectfully request your consideration of the permit fee waiver or reduction for Faces of Oregon. As you know, our community has extremely limited childcare options and many families are struggling to find reliable local care and high quality care. This nonprofit daycare was created specifically to address that gap and to support the growing number of families who live and work in our city. I, the director of this daycare, have exhausted my personal savings to launch the program covering startup costs such as licensing, safety upgrades, equipment, and curriculum materials. I have done this because I believe deeply in serving North Plains families, ensuring that every child has access to a safe, nurturing, high quality, quality early learning environment. Unfortunately, the current city permits fees now pose a major barrier to opening. These costs, while understandable for a standard commercial project, they are significant for the start date for this nonprofit. I respectfully ask the council to consider waiving or reducing the applicable fees for this nonprofit daycare. Thank you for your time and consideration, Mr. Pass.
Thank you. Next up is Johanna. Jo.
Johanna.
Johanna. My apologies. I haven't just pronounced your name yet. Don't worry, it's gonna happen. So just bear with me as I figure it all out. So just name inside, I'm sorry, inside resident or outside and then you have three minutes.
Hello, good evening, council members. My name is Johanna Hunt. I reside in nine seven one three three. I serve as a coordinator for the North Plains Volunteer Network, which is a program under the North Plains Senior Center. I'm a lifelong North Plains resident and I care deeply about the well-being, dignity, and connectedness of the people who live here. Over the past year, many of us have seen the growing needs in our community, especially among older adults, people living alone, and neighbors who don't have a natural support network. At the same time, we have an incredible number of residents who want to help but haven't had a clear or safe way to do so. The North Plains Volunteer Network was created to bridge that very gap. Our goal is simple, to connect local neighbors with neighbors who need a hand with everyday tasks. These things look like rides to appointments, grocery pickups, friendly visits, or light home support. These are very small things, but they make a meaningful difference in helping people stay independent and connected. We are building a structured accountable system that prioritizes safety, reliability, and good communication. Volunteers complete training, undergo background checks, and only take on tasks that they choose and feel confident in doing so. Clients can make requests that match their comfort level and coordinators can step in when something needs extra attention or to help connect with the existing resources. We have applied to the CBPG grant and over the next several months will continue to expand outreach and begin our digital platform as well as prepare for a full public launch in two thousand and twenty six. This is not a government program, but neighbors helping neighbors, and I want the council to be aware of what's developing because it truly strengthens the social fabric of our town. My hope is that this becomes something that North Plains can be proud of, a simple, local solution that supports independence, reduces isolation, and strengthens community resilience. Thank you for giving me a moment to share this and for all the support you give the people of North Plains.
Thank you so much. Lori, any others?
Nothing received prior to the meeting.
Yeah. So next up is resolution. Bill. You have a staff report.
Always. Just scrolling through the little computer, it's not quite bringing. Well, resolution twenty three twenty two, although for you, there is a staff report on this, but basically so on November seventeenth, this city council went through an interview process of applicants to be mayor for the city of North Plains and by charter and code. The city council went through a process of noticing the vacancy for at least two weeks, accepting applicants who are residents of the city for at least a year and are registered to vote. Went through the process of hearing from candidates who had applied for the position and then went through a charter in Oregon state law compliant nomination and vote process. And you all restating the obvious, but you all unanimously voted for current council president Aaron Dunbar to be the next mayor of North Plains to fill the vacancy, which lasts the seat, the seat term lasting through December thirty first, two thousand and twenty eight. Council Dunbar, did you check that detail? Two thousand and twenty eight?
Yes.
Okay. Just being clear. So the resolution before you basically makes that, that, that selection process official by resolution. And so that's the, that's the issue before you for approval this evening with twenty three twenty two.
So at this time I will entertain motion.
Without further ado, I move to adopt resolution twenty three twenty two to appoint Aaron Dunbar as the mayor of North Plains.
I'll second.
Councilor Page has made a motion to approve twenty three twenty two. Councilor Piven has seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great, go to turn. No. All right, can I read this while you read yours?
This is both our least favorite part of the, of the process.
Get your cameras out.
And ladder. Help me where to stand so that it goes. Him and the.
Oh, just look at the camera.
I'm looking at the phone. Very good. They're here. Lori, is you doing this place? You guys want to stand in front of the thing over there? I can make my ears better out, dude. There we go.
Oh.
For constituents, all your thing, like, that's good. Okay, please repeat after me. You're already not raised. You've done it before. I state your name, swear that I faithfully support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
I, Aaron Dunbar, swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of North Plains.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of North Plains.
And I will perform the duties of mayor for the city of North Plains to the best of my ability.
And I will perform the duties of the mayor of the city of North Plains to the best of my ability.
So long as I may continue in that capacity, so help me God.
So long as I may continue in that capacity, so help me God.
Congratulations. I will sign your copy at the end.
Yes. All right, I'll keep it short by just had a couple of things I wanted to say real quick. I would like to take one to thank the council, the city staff, and residents of North Plains and my friends who showed up and my family. My wife and my son were here, further continued support and confidence. A wise person once told me recently, you should always consider people's motivation. Over the coming months, the council will put actionable goals to our vision and demonstrate our motivation. We are one city. There are no sides. We are neighbors. We will build on the legacy of the leadership gone before us to leave behind an even better city. Ronald Reagan said, the greatest leader is not necessarily the one who does the greatest things. He is the one who gets the people to do the greatest things. So thank you, and I appreciate your confidence, and I will do everything I can to live up to it and to be the best mayor that I can. But thank you all. Okay, now the fun part, staff report on twenty, resolution twenty three twenty three, declaring vacancy on city council.
Very good. Mayor Dunbar. Okay, very nice. Thank you very much and congratulations. That's fantastic. So at swearing in, and just to verify, Mayor Dunbar since the last meeting, sent in via email and it's in the agenda packet, declaring his intent to resign from his previous at-large city council seat. That was necessary for him to take the vacant mayor seat. And that opens up a second city council seat that's vacant. And so this resolution twenty three twenty three, if approved by city council, would basically set us staff on the process to allow you to select somebody, an applicant, for this second city council seat. With approval of the resolution, we'll get a notice out into the paper that will be published a week from Friday. And then two weeks later, the earliest city council meeting where you all can do a selection process for this second seat would be at the January January fifth meeting. So roughly in between them is the bottom line. So we, we, we work at the speed of newspaper publishing in, in the public sector. So I'll leave it to you, Mayor, for the rest.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time I'll entertain motion on twenty three twenty three, declaring city council vacancy. Councilor Ready.
Council Ready. I move to adopt resolution twenty three twenty three to determine and declare a vacancy on North Plains City Council.
Do I have a second?
James Fain, Jason.
All right, Council Ready makes a motion to approve resolution twenty three twenty three. Councilor Page seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So staff, go ahead and publish, please.
Just so you know, there's two terms after now. How are we going to differentiate so everybody knows which term is going to be there? We can put in newspaper? We're going to say the first term expires and we stay?
The one that's already published that came out Friday in the paper is the one that's filling the one-year term because that's Michelle McCall Wallace's term. And she was the first to vacate. So that one is yeah, that was the one-year term. And then the second one that will be in next Friday's paper and will receive applications for the next two weeks. After that will be the finish your term out till December two thousand and twenty eight.
So we need to make it clear for everybody applying that the first one's going to be expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Correct, because she was.
The newspaper article says.
I think that's for this one. I think so.
That's, is that in the packet?
Yeah.
That's for this.
So actually, let's go and jump in because that actually leads us to the unfinished business piece. So let's, let's real, I want to make sure that we clarify this with everyone. So it is the one-year seat for Councilor, for Michelle McCall Wallace's seat. The other thing I want to make clear is, let's see, okay, I'll just, it's in the charter, so we all know this, but I just want to be very clear with everyone. The four councillors vote, the mayor is not accepting case of a tie. So this is on you guys. And so you all will vote on it and then we will do the swearing in, I believe, at the next council meeting.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, good. Yes, councillor.
Councilor Hagedorn here. Can you please clarify for me, and just, just so I, is Crystal clear for me, is that opening date to apply for this position and the when you stop taking applications?
So the, the position that is open from Council McCall Wallace's resignation opened Friday. That was when it was in the paper.
Okay.
And it is open for two weeks. So next Friday, a week from this coming Friday at noon, will be the last time that we accept applications. And then those applications will be in your packet for December fifteenth. And that's when you'll hopefully be able to select someone to fill that first vacancy for the year. And then the vacancy that the mayor left is going to be in next Friday's paper because of how printing goes, and it will be open until the two weeks from next Friday.
Basically, end of.
The end of December, what the twenty, not twenty six, at noon. We'll take applications up until then, and then those applications will be on your, in your agenda packet for January fifth.
I'm going to order these.
Yes.
There's a bit of pump. It was trying to get sworn in that head of families over here and I don't want to select somebody and then say, have us wear on the same day. I want to have a chance with this family here, right? So we selected the next meeting that's where.
That's for you guys to decide. I mean.
Okay.
The way we've historically done it and the way I would suggest, but again, this is your decisions, council, not mine. My suggestion is we you, you make the decision the next meeting. And then they're sworn in the fall.
Yes.
That was my understanding because that's how we did this one. So I was trying to keep the precedent, make it simple, but you're, you all are the decision because I don't vote on this.
So that would mean the swearing in of the person filling the one year would be on January fifth.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The second one, so twenty eighth will be on the nineteenth, January nineteenth, or that's a holiday. That's a holiday, Tuesday, the twentieth.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Good catch. Anybody, any other comments, questions? Everybody's clear. Council votes. I break the tie. So one way or another, we're going to have a sixth, sixth person on council.
January fifth.
Thank you.
Well, you would select.
We'll select them in the next meeting, one way or the other.
Mayor.
Yes, please.
One question, comment, question. Procedurally for, for the process. Do you want to ask questions? And how many?
Yes.
You, you know, as a reminder for the mayor, you know, you were in the hot seat. There were a number of questions because there were, there were specific questions regarding mayor. Mayor's duty roles, understanding that's not the case for the regular city council seat. So it's up to you all, if you want to ask questions, how many would you like to ask? And would you like to have the same plan and process for the fifteenth for the one-year term as in January for the, the term through two thousand and twenty eight?
So before I turn it over to council, I'm just going to remind you, we also have staff reports. So next meeting is our long meeting, so just keep that in mind as you make your decision. How many questions do you want to ask? But with that, what, what's the decision to council?
I would like to ask questions. Do I know what they are right now? I would be a little more thoughtful about it because you know, I suggest that we send Lori our question they'd like to ask, then she puts them all together and sends us a script and then you all get to choose one of those questions to ask. I hope you all just pick one, right? And if there are similar ones to the other ones, maybe you'll, you know, maybe everybody can put them too. So in case someone, in case I ask the same question and Katie has the same questions, you know, you could have a little bit of like diversity there.
Any other thoughts? Speaker. Please.
Councilor Hagedorn here. My recommendation would be today, where council would be to consider a time fence. And I thought the ten-minute mark was pretty natural, maybe even a little bit long. But that would be my recommendation from a process perspective.
Council Piven. Yes.
Council Piven, I am also aligned with some sort of time fence for interviews. I would also like to ask questions and I would just encourage the spotty to not rush the process. I know that's going to be a long meeting, but we, we have one chance. I want to make sure we thoroughly vetted each candidate. And I also would second what Council Page had mentioned about us compiling maybe a couple of questions emailed to Lori and then we can round robin during the interview panel if that's the direction we go.
Council Ready.
Council Ready here. I mean, we have four pretty great questions in the interview, or in the packet as well, so.
From last time.
They're on the application. So.
It's fair to. Good, so what? I mean, guys.
I also think the time limit should be set based off of the number of applicants, seeing as when we have a lot of public comment, if we have ten applicants, ten minutes per applicant is a lot. So I think that's something we have to judge the day, or once we know our total.
I agree. Uh, Council Page, I, I agree. I think they send Lori the questions and want to use them from the application as, as great, keeps it simpler. We should all have some questions to ask. We should probably keep it to five or six questions. This way, when a new councillor comes in, we'll use the same questions for the next applicant. They have to be the same set of questions to use. So we don't, we admit the will. I foresee the one-year term having less applicants than the two-year term. But maybe some people get together and, you know, say, okay, for one-year, one, even the longer one, you know, maybe Brian Conover. I don't know what the strategy is going to be with folks. And I do think that we should do the same questions for both terms.
So if I could just summarize, what I think I heard, and council, correct me if I'm wrong, what I think I heard you say is you'd like to send any questions to Lori, but also they're going to answer the other questions. So you can either use one of the questions that's on the application or one of the questions you sent to Lori, and you'd like to decide the time limit on the day of the interviews. Is this, is that roughly summarize what you all decided?
I think it's okay. We just stick to ten minutes. This way we know, we have one person who has ten minutes. Next thing we have a bunch of people, they're going to have ten minutes each. We, we, we afford everybody the same time then.
Any objections? Okay, Lori, does that work for you? Okay. Great. Thank you all. Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions on the selection process? I mean, this, this one is very straightforward because there's no weird mayor stuff. It's just mayor's love. It's that simple. Thankful. That is that simple. Okay, so let's move on. We need to update the banks. Oh, sorry.
We choose the new council president, Juan.
Yep.
So that's.
Yeah, you guys talked about that at the last meeting and if I recall, you decided to wait until you had all seven in place. So that would be most likely the second meeting in January or even possibly the first meeting.
Yeah, one of those.
Yeah.
Reasonable if we're going to have all council. I mean. Okay, so next item, new business. We do need to have a second signer on the bank signers list. Council McCall Wallace or Michelle McCall Wallace was the previous second for mine. Normally that would be the council president, but since we don't have one, we do need somebody to do that. And that will be on a resolution on the summer fifteen, once we decide. So any volunteer.
Can we, wait, we have the.
Think so. I think we got to get somebody on there, yes or no?
Um, it, it's really just an emergency type thing. It, it, it's not super urgent, I would.
This is going to keep Bill and Lori awake at night?
Not, well, we, we have three signers right now, including you. We just tend to like to have two, two, yeah, it, it goes back to the days of, of all checks having two signers on them, but since we haven't done that a while, it's not quite as essential.
All right, does any, any of the councils have objection to wait until the new council president? Are we good with that? Okay, well, I guess we have consensus. Awesome. Thank you. All right, so we'll move right along to the council, I'm sorry, to the city manager report.
Um, city manager report, I I don't have a ton to say. We'll kind of run through on the work session with all this. The only thing I guess I would say is thank you very much for everybody's, the big thing is everybody's input on different work sessions that you would like to see over the next over the next few months. The last person, we got some, the last person sent them in yesterday. And so I want to kind of filter in what the priorities were. I've had a draft list, but I'll, I'll bring it to you final and based on that. But what I do want to say is that we are planning for the first work session to be, to discuss what the issues are and opportunities in a joint work session with the planning commission on the fifteenth to just kind of lay it out. Where are all the problems in the current zoning code? And then when it comes to things like parking and this, that, the other in the code where we, we have to enforce it with violations by people. There are certainly some challenges in there too. So and, and, and suggested amendments would have to go to planning commission first for all of that anyway. So we'll have a joint work session and kind of lay all of that out and understand what to do, depending on what the, what the decision is by, from the state on the zoning code assistance grant application we put in, whether or not we get it. So there are options, but we'll talk about all that on the fifteenth. And then we'll go from there. The other thing I would say is we had strategic, doing a two-year strategic plan was a higher priority for a few different people. And what I would suggest on that one is, is that we do that probably the second meeting of January after we know who we have on council. So that would be the only one I would intentionally push back a little bit. So all seven are here and you all as a full body can decide those things.
Anybody disagree, object? I think we agree. Perfect.
That's about it for me. Thank you.
I do have one free thing that library director, Donnie, asked to remind or let people know that there's no library board meeting in December. They normally don't have one. They choose to do some kind of volunteer project in town and they have made that decision that can't really do this. But anyway, just in case anybody thought they might have executive duties or anything, there's no luck.
That's a bit of a cheat. I always want that similar one, but. Council Piven got this here, thanks.
You can all volunteer.
My understanding is that it was not turned out the food bank. You know what we get as well during that?
They're helping with the Giving Tree Project distribute gifts to some local seniors.
If anybody wants to jump in and help with that, how, how would they?
We just do. There's a, I saw, there's. Join the library. Library, a little tad, nothing, make a tad off. Oh, yes.
If anybody wants to, if anybody listening wants to participate with the library board, it will be to organize, give a campaign. Please step in the library, find out. Thanks.
And also just go to the library, because it's awesome. All right, anybody else? All right, so let's go to council reports. Do I have any volunteers or do I just need to pick on people today?
I'll go first since mine was just discussed. I had the privilege of attending the library board. And it's already been covered that the library levy funding will come in fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven for City Manager Reed. And the library has a Giving Tree set up for our seniors, collecting holiday-themed items. And children are welcome to go make Christmas cards for our seniors as well. And the library board isn't meeting in December. Heads instead volunteering. Those were my highlights.
Awesome. All right, who next?
Uh, this is the one.
Yep.
Counselor Fager. First off, thank you, Katie, for coming for me. I, I get excited when I hear the library board. I just want to volunteer there, and I don't put myself, unfortunately. So she helped cover for me. Thank you. I was invited in the last minutes to go to the Strong Towns. Wasn't there a regular meeting? It was their committee meeting. So I got to go and take place of that. It's pretty organized. The folks that are there are the people you have seen giving testimony. And it's a pretty well-run meeting. They asked some opinions of how I was ran. I told them I was ran pretty, pretty well. I do like how organized they are. That, Kess and Kudos, talked about, you know, using social media to like kind of throw shade at people, but nobody there did it, they said. So we have that. But overall, it's a pretty good meeting. I like those people there, and I'm glad there's community involvement. I'm glad there's community involvement. They're not part of the North Plains actual sanctioned, like we have different boards. We have outside people coming in. When I say outside, I mean outside the city's charter, coming in together and being involved. So that's really nice. Anytime there's any kind of civilian activity, it's great. So that's interesting. Thank you.
Counselor Piven, I have not had any ex officio duties yet this month, and I will connect with you, Director Dody, after the meeting to clarify my volunteer opportunity. But I did have opportunity to attend the second neighborhood meeting that was held in North Plains Elementary. I want to say great job to Rowan and Bill. It was really well organized. I think you got some great, great feedback, just really great turnout as well. I also just wanted to bring it up again and, and refresh my memory. I was trying to go through previous meeting minutes. Where did we land? Or can anyone jog my memory where we landed with fee waivers and how we would be consistent going forward?
Uh, that was, sorry. Mayor Dunbar, that was specific to Chelsea Mays, I believe, and that was, I want to say it was late spring. And it was supposed to be Parks Board, because that was there. We did not have a full-on fee waiver conversation. But that might be something you bring up to your.
Okay, yeah, because I think, I think, you know, just the last few months, we've had a couple of different nonprofits approach council regarding a reduction in fees or waiver of fees for permits or applications. So I just wanted to see what this sports consensus was on. Do we want to standardize and approach that for the future, or where do we land?
If, if I, we had a long discussion about this. There's several heartstrings being, being pulled, and we all want to be helpful as much as possible. However, we also wanted to, like, we want to say, these are the fees. If somebody wants to use their time to ask for a fee waiver, they'll definitely hear it. But if somebody's moving, we, we need to take action. We will, but for the most part, the fees are going to stay as they are.
I would. Counselor Haganor here. I would love to have a discussion on how we might package up a standardized approach if we wanted to take that into consideration, how we, for nonprofits. So I think I would be open to that conversation.
I mean, I'm happy to have a conversation as well.
I feel like this is something that we're going to need to put to a subcommittee at some point, so I will take a note. If, if the council's good with that, I think a subcommittee would be better, because this is. We would need a recommendation, is what I'm getting at. A full council, but it's something easier worked out by two or three counselors, in my opinion, unless somebody disagrees with me. All right, I think that's, that's good.
I think just the last thing, Thursday is the North Plains Jingle. So that would be my last thing. I'll, I'll pass it over to Counselor Haganor.
I've had a light ex officio last two weeks, so not need to report, but I am looking forward to going back to the Parks Board next week, and I've got a week three of December, a WACU meeting, so should be something fun to report out.
All right, so I was also at the North Plains Elementary Neighborhood Meeting. Well, we got a lot of interesting feedback, which kind of led to Bill and I discussing, we need a little more of these, the, the fee structure, or not fee, I'm sorry, the water fund. And levies and things like that. So that was helpful. I felt like Rowan and Bill took a lot of the feedback from the initial one, and were able to make a lot of changes that seemed to resonate as far as showing numbers, but we're also still starting to get, we're getting more feedback, which is helpful. So please attend. There'll be another one tomorrow night, here, yeah, here, I'll be right here, for the main North Plains neighborhood. So if you're at all able, it would be great to hear your, your opinions and your inputs. Lots of good conversations. And, oh, we did the ribbon cutting with the Washington County Chamber of Commerce for La Votoria. I think I pronounced that correctly this time, after practicing for three hours. Really great. It was a lot of fun, because I actually got to hear the story behind, like, why they started the business. It was a lot of fun. And I've never done ribbon cutting, so it was super, like, awkward to get thrown into that, but it was a lot of fun to actually meet the, the owners in a different context. And then, let's see, we did the ribbon cutting for Alord. All right, see, been practicing for a little fitness on Saturday, which was great, had a great turnout, and there's obviously cake at the gym, which, you know, I mean, who doesn't want cake at a gym? That was, it was fun. And, and the owners are trying to bring everyone together, so we really love when, when businesses are trying to collaborate. Because that's good for everyone. And everyone working together is always a positive thing. And then, let's see, so they were being tomorrow, North Plains Jingle, and then Peak Chiropractic Christmas Party. I think it's three to five, if I remember right, three, three to five, or six or something. At Peak, so they would definitely love to see you there.
What day?
Uh, Friday. And, oh, and then I just have two questions. Well, I have one thing for the council, and I have one question for Bill, and this might have been under city manager board. But I did want to call up with you on the audits. Is that something we can, because I know that you mentioned that we're still, we're waiting on them to get it done. Is that something we can throw money at to get those wrapped up, so that we can just put it behind us, or what's the, don't wait, not, I got you, thank you. That did not come out, right? I'm not suggesting we bribe anyone. I'm saying, can we put dollars to move, you know, to get the audits done, to need more people, or more manpower? That's what I'm trying to get at, sorry.
Great, no, great question. Yeah, no, we don't want to, we don't want to fail an audit trying to get a lot of done. That's, yeah, no, question understood. It, it's really, it we have regular communication with them. We're just, we're right now in the thick of regular audit season, and so they work at our and other late, later audits that they're doing, or financial statements that they're doing. So it's just us being in contact with them, update on, on timeline, FY twenty-two being first, but it's really just, that's just what it is, so.
Okay, can we get a date from now by the next meeting, when they think it'll be done? Because we, I, it, again, not we know that it's fine, we just need to get it done. I just want it off, off our plates. And I don't want us to get in trouble, bribery, so forget I said that, that one did not come out correctly. The other thing I had from last council meeting I wanted to put before council is, I believe what you said, and I just want to clarify this. Sounded like we wanted the council to do a review of boards and commissions standards and conducts and standardize the rules. And if that's the case, my suggestion for you to decide on is I think that should be a subcommittee to make some recommendations, so that we can just get it knocked out. None of the work sessions at all. Planning Commission and budgets and more budgets, and then even more budgets. So I'm just trying to move things along as fast as I can. So if that's something council would like to do, I'd like to ask that we look at as a subcommittee, if you're open to that. Counselor Page, Counselor Piven, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I really, we should have a overall clarity. When, I was at the planning session until, like, last month. Some of the members were nervous, like, what can I say, what can I not say? So we had, we had to clarify some of that, but having the qualified rule would be great. Each commission can make it smaller, but we'll have a broader one for us.
I'm sorry, make what?
Each commission can have a more specific, one they want to have, more narrower, and we'll have a broad one.
Yeah. Okay, so do I have any volunteers to start the subcommittee on the rules and commission standards rules? Mission standards and conduct and standardization rules? Actually, who are the three of you? Well, two, two, because I can't have three now, right?
Right now, yeah.
Or, or we can push this off if you, if you all want to wait a little bit longer, but I think sooner is better, in my opinion.
Let's go to Michelle, we have a full session.
Okay, everybody good with pushing off for two weeks, two, two months?
Can we start and then add the committee? Is that beneficial in any way, or waste time?
We could, I mean, you could grab the, a list of rules, or list of basics.
Or then someone can start collecting from.
And there's nothing to say that you all can't start putting your spots together in one committee's form. We also just do that.
I like your urgency.
Okay, so I just got two volunteers. So I'm hearing it, Counselor Haganor and Counselor Redding?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, so we have subcommittee.
So Counsel, could you please send us your overarching umbrella? You know, ideas on code of conduct and policy.
And your reply, all's, we do not want any serial meetings accidental. So BCC. Counselor, please. Okay, I'll go ahead.
I, I do have, I, I want you guys to start looking at calendars for next year, ex officio duties, whether you still want to stay on the same county meetings that you've been attended, or anyway, those boards that you're on representing North Plains. If you have certain dates that you can't do ex officio, Counselor Fage always did that before when we had a set schedule, but just send me those, and I can work around those, but I, I need to start working on it now. And it'll take times, probably by the, hopefully by the first meeting in February. And I'll put it in the packet, the two January meetings, and you guys can discuss and make adjustments.
Yeah, and once we have a full council, I would like to hand up, at least one of mine. I'll probably hand up Mac if I can, to somebody, but we can't wait for a full council, so we don't have any more meetings. And then I'm going to need a couple of alternates for community development and well, those can wait, but reminding everyone. And then, let's see, so this month I will have EDC on Wednesday. So Counselor Haganor has Parks. Counsel Redding has Planning Commission, and Counselor Piven will be volunteering at the library. All right, anything else for the good of your order? All right. With that, we will adjourn the city council meeting at seven forty-seven.